This year and we are like deficit of about hundred thousand dollars or so. But this challenge to collect this amount. What are the issues or concerns that what committee or not is possibly to make it up?
So that is as we indicated at committee level, what we're looking to do is for, we've seen a tremendous amount of increase in unpaid fees. We currently have limited consequences. What we will do is withhold your official transcript if you owe fees, which we're allowed to do by law. But later this spring, we will be a recommendation. I'm currently working with the schools to get a list of names to go through and see if we should be taking additional action against those that owe a significant amount of money. It's something that during COVID we put off doing because we recognized that there were extenuating circumstances, but the schools have contacted, you know, we offer payment plans, we will work with anybody on their outstanding fees. So it is just something that we're seeing that is a trend that we do not like.
What is the percentage of the students compared to total of about sixty-five, seven thousand students of students?
I believe according to the report that I did in Friday notes, there's about a little over eleven hundred students that owe a hundred dollars in there.
How many?
I think there's a, there was, there were eight hundred, eleven hun- I don't know. We did on Friday notes and I'll share it again, Friday notes, we went through and did an analysis of any student who owed a hundred dollars or more and then we broke them down in bands of those that based on their balance wouldn't have paid fees for four years, three years, two years, and then one year and gave you those bands and then reviewed those bands against some components of services, whether they be pre-introduced, ELL services, IDP, to see if there are any analysis or trend and there was no kind of correlation between services students were receiving and unpaid amount of fees.
Do you use the trends of one level of the students, freshmen, sophomore, junior, seniors, and post-al?
You can see, we haven't, we haven't looked at it by grade level, but we looked at it in terms of the dollar value. So one year, when you look, the band that hasn't paid fees in four years is very small. It increases a little bit for those that haven't paid for three years and then there is a substantial drop, I mean a substantial increase in students who have not paid fees in two years and one year. So for the last two years, we've seen a subs- I mean like a tenfold increase in the number of kids.
It's actually close to fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred. And how are we addressing it? How are we?
So we're, I mean, we have, the schools have sent letters, they've made phone calls to try and get a better understanding, offer payment plans. I'm, I'm, you know, there's, there is, there is very little consequences for not payment of fees that the district currently has, which is why we're going to bring the board a list of some strategies for consequences. I'm not saying that we're going to implement that, but we are going to give you things that you can do.
And then we're also at some point going to discuss potentially lowering the student fees as well.
We have it really gradually.
Significantly lower the student fees. They were, you know, probably when your kids went to school, it wasn't unusual to have six to eight hundred dollars a year. They're down to about four hundred. We've changed now. They've been cut significantly.
Is another idea that may be put forth, so right now if the annual household income is fifty thousand dollars or less that students have to pay, do I understand that correctly?
Correct.
So one idea that's supposed to be put forth is maybe raising that amount too.
We would have to see if you could legally do that because free and reduced is a benchmark from the federal government and it provides a lot, I mean, so we would, we would have to figure out if, and, and that is what, so, so what we want to do is the federal government sets a benchmark at those income levels for qualifying students and then that is how we qualify the title ones. So before we look at that, we want to make sure that we could legally do that. We might have to somehow create our own category of those students and track two different levels because those would not qualify based on the federal requirements for low income.
That's not one of my concerns, the people that are just about that, but not by much.
Correct.
That it's a huge burden of them.
Yeah, and that's why we always, we, you know, we do something that very few schools do and put together a payment plan and if, if the schools know that if a family is struggling, we can stretch that payment plan to make that even more affordable than the six payments that we spread it over.
And then one quick question regarding 179, although it's a productivity. What's the GASP stands for? It is for three point seven million is budgeted.
Oh, sure. So GASP is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. They made a new accounting standard that says that the totality of revenue expenditures for student activity funds at year end must come over and be reported in the educational fund in one light item for revenue and one light item for expenditures. So this represents about three point seven million in terms of revenue. That's what all three schools have on an annualized basement for student activities. This is just us having to budget for that GASP mandate and then making that journal entry at year end.
Nothing new, it's just a different.
Just a, it's just.
New, new particular.
Correct. It's, it's a new, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board is the board that defines the auditing standards for governmental entities. And they make, they, they've gone in the last couple of years a little crazy. There were, you know, maybe thirty governmental accounting standards and now we're in the high eighties. So every year or two, they are implementing a new standard for us.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Mary. Structural Services, Sean?
So this is actually a little report by Eileen and Ben related to their experimentation in off-campus lunch, so.
We worked together on this one and I lost the coin flip, so I'm going to start and Ben is going to add in. So you may know that students have Aspen's privilege for a long time and in all of our buildings, we've been lately emphasizing structure because as kids have come back to school from school being anywhere or nowhere over the last two years, structure's been something that we have found we very much need. So as we're emphasizing structure to help younger students get back into school routines, some of the seniors have bristled a little bit and we feel that if they can demonstrate that they can manage their business, they should get a little recognition of that difference between themselves and younger students. And we also see this as a good opportunity to hold them to account and if they earn it, then they maintain it and we have certain routines in place for them to do that. So we want to acknowledge and reinforce positive choices. We want to emphasize the connection between responsibility and freedom. We have incentives for them to improve their standing and we want to affirm responsibility and accountability as crucial attributes in the world of work. So participants will be main south and main west and main east will evaluate the results of our pilot and we will consider implementation in the fall of twenty-two when it's not Mike's problem. So some of the details. So our eligibility, we would extend this to seniors, we would get written parent permission on file. We would offer this opportunity to students who demonstrate ninety percent on-time attendance over the last fifteen days. We've been tracking attendance on fifteen day labs and we would, anyone who is in that sweet spot of ninety percent or better, we would, they would maintain the privilege. They would be passing all classes and there would be no loss of privilege designation as part of the disciplinary process. So in all respects, in a pretty comprehensive way, they would be in good standing. Some of the logistics, we can have our admin assistants in the attendance office enter eligible students on a daily list that we would sync with scanners. We have currently, our lunch periods are printed on IDs, so if we can show their ID, you know, what's your name that are allowed to be in lunch? We would designate specific locations for scanning in and out and those would be communicated clearly to students. They would need to scan in and out every day on time or they lose the privilege. Some of our kids are already in the routines of scanning into certain places. It's the library for you guys, right?
Yeah.
And a couple of other places for us too, so. That's familiar to them and something that they've been able to manage. So the process, obviously we would communicate thoroughly. We would make sure students know the criteria and the procedures and the expectations that they have to maintain and how we're going to make sure that they stay up to date with them and when we start, which is TBD. The parent consent form would detail all of these expectations and procedures. It would require both the parent and the student to sign it to accept responsibility. And we would train the staff to make sure that safety monitors and security staff learn procedures on scanning and monitoring the entry and exits and so on. So we realize too that we have new spaces, they're beautiful new spaces and our kids deeply enjoy them. And yet we still want to offer this opportunity because we feel that the seniors especially have had a pretty compromised high school experience. They are craving that recognition that they do things well and when they are, we feel like we'd like to give it to them. They are, they have carried a lot of load for us, or I would say that they brought us back. They have set the tone, they've modeled a lot of good behaviors. Just to mark on some others and we feel like this sentiment centers will be very powerful for them as they ask me about it all the time. And do you have anything?
No, we just agree everything Dr. McMahon's saying, think especially senior second semester, there's maybe different dispositions that they might start to have and this might incentivize them to make really positive choices.
AKA senior argument.
Yeah.
So the first question I had is, is, there's been a longstanding swing in legal league. Years ago, back in the seventies and eighties, open campus was pretty common, kind of in a way. It was for liability related issues. So the very first set of questions I had was around that and, you know, I think Mary and I had some conversations about this through four times and consulted with our liability insurance. Mary, I think if you want to speak to that, I'm sure that that is a top-of-mind issue for board members.
The key is parental consent. So once you outline the criteria and both the student and parent, particularly the parent agrees and understands that this is what they're consenting to, that, that's where your liability goes along. Because you're doing that with consent with them.
So passing all classes, is that literally meaning of just?
No.
Right. So do you have any concern that that bar might be a little low?
No, no, I don't. I don't want to index it to higher grade because they're PIB kids are doing everything that they can to do well and they're not. And I don't see where PIB is going to be an incentive beyond that.
And these are also students who are attending, they're ninety percent attended.
And do you think that's high enough too, the ninety percent?
I do, yeah.
Do you mean hardy or absent, allowable to be hardy or absent?
On-time attendance.
We, this is a pilot for us, so we're going to have to evaluate, you know, as we go and do this, just like we've had to do kind of everything right now. So a lot of, even just the procedural aspects, we talked to all the other CSL schools about how they do this and they gave us a lot of good feedback over the course of, like, I would say that figured the last three months in our principal meetings and then other schools even outside of that. Pretty normal thing in Illinois and this area. So I think we'll continuously come back and kind of figure out like what's the right degree of, you know, predictors or, you know, data that we would need to use and then to how the system would actually work. So we still have some things that we would have to iron out, there's some differences in the buildings a little bit. There's even some differences with just kind of what kind of food options you might have. You know, I've, I've always envied that one of these is by East.
We've got Chicago ramen.
Yeah, of course we do. So there's just going to be certain things that we have to really monitor and obviously the, the first thing that comes to mind when we talk to principals is you have to have a way to know that the students, you know, if it's not showing up, that privilege is removed immediately. So that has to work really well.
And I think I could give you a better answer than I did initially too. So who are the kids that we want to motivate to leave the framework? The kids who are already sailing through and getting ready to do are going to be over the bar anyway. It's the kids who are a little bit marginal or struggling to make the decisions that will help them succeed. I don't want to put the bar too far up for kids who are actually really making an effort.
That might help them cry more if they have that option. Like if they're not taking three or three, like they.
As I always say, it is very impressive that we are trying as a renovating intensive system that, that we are aggressively act on it. As we can see as a global educational, especially overseas, like in South Korea, one of the top highest education industry over there too, and they're not a, they're not able to follow what we are doing basically. I think we do have one of the top best US educational systems, especially all this kind of kind of programs that you are initiating, that we are initiating. Quite impressive and that definitely works a lot for other global educational institutions able to adapt and learn and catch up. And I don't see that over there. They're somewhat far lacking compared to our US educational system. So continue to keep up the great work on that particular and Mike has to.
Thank you. Sorry, when, when is it starting?
It's going to take some time for us to get up and running, especially at South. We've got a lot of new staff members coming on board with safety and security. So I wish I could give you a date, but I want to make sure that the systems are in place for us to do it first.
Yeah, our data retains it in particular.
Yeah.
So once we have all the details, can you, I would like you to present to the board on the details, like what, even what order they're going to use here, so much of our, our billing, you know, referendum what we're doing is to create that safety, adding always and everything. So I would, I would really like that logistics and I think the board should.
Hopefully nice weather is an incentive to, so even if it's not right now, it makes sense to get nicer.
And the scanning will allow us to, to designate quickly someone who's not eligible anymore. They don't scan in or scan, you know, scan back out, scan out or scan back in. Or if they don't come back and they were supposed to be in a class during that lunch period, they're going to be scanning on their phones and their phones will register through our apps. They're not eligible to go. So that will trigger a conversation.
Any other questions, comments, or? Principal, thank you. Okay, monthly update employee requests. Ben?
Three, they've all been processed.
All right, moving on to our action items. Do I have a motion on our content agenda, items seven, eight, through F?
Second.
And I just want to point out.
Oh, so we have to, oh, hang on. So we're going to have to separate out on seven, eight. I, so first, do I have a motion on seven, A, per minute of the regular board meeting of January third, twenty-twenty?
So move to second.
Collins, Christian, Coyle?
Aye.
Kilber?
Augustine.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf A. Brunson?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion now on items seven, eight, through F?
So move to second.
Consent again?
Yes. Only because it's a rarity, there's someone in the audience who's also listed in our school gives, David Hiller, who made his class in nineteen seventy-two, who has been a real driving force within the last year or so on our foundation and David happens to be in the audience. So the rare occasion that we have someone who's actually donating.
Absolutely.
That's not, that's not why I showed up, but I was.
You've got an entertaining meeting tonight.
And Mama Mia is coming right up, so I hope you all get tickets.
But David, previously ran the McCormick Foundation, so he's got a little bit of, a little bit of background in running foundations. So David, thank you for being here. So I'm sorry.
Oh, not at all. That is totally worth it. I'm surprised you normally don't come and send it down. Thank you so much for going in some for this.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. You truly represent District Two oh seven's best too. Wish you had that front of the meeting, so. Okay, do I have a motion on number eight, revised school calendar and new course proposals? So it's been.
There was a motion, yes, we were watching the second.
Yusuf A. Brunson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye.
Now do I have a motion on number eight, revised school calendar and new course proposals for twenty-two and twenty-three?
So move to second.
So the first item is the revised school calendar. After, if you remember, we usually approve this in September or so. After having lived this year and coming immediately back after the New Year's holiday, there was some movement afoot throughout the district and other districts to give students, they had the break extend that week. And so working with our partner districts as well as other districts in the area, because our, our teachers do reside in two fourteen, two eleven, that this better aligns our time off over winter break will better align with all of those other surrounding districts. So that's the major change. It does move spring break back since we're moving the, the winter break back and still maintains a hundred and eighty days of class.
Does it still align with our partner grammar?
Yes, it does. In fact, they were the ones that said, Sean, can we take a look at this? So I said, sure, absolutely.
But will that be a little concern for other most parents? Because this is the right date before Christmas, Day Eve or something and so many of them take a trip.
So we, we did discuss an earlier date, but the problem is you start then, if you, if you want to start the third week in August and end by Memorial Day, you start fudging these days here and there with students. And this, we felt this was the best calendar not to put students in a scenario where we may have late attendance, even though it is an actual school day. So we do go until the Thursday before, however, Friday is off. The, the Christmas Eve and the Saturday with Christmas on Sunday. So it does give a little bit of a buffer. So.
At the same time, you're saying our neighborhood, other elementary, middle school, schools also following through the same procedure? How about CPS possibly knowing?
They start after Labor Day, so we never really know.
So what I, what I think is probably maybe going to be a benefit of COVID and COVID, you know, have some waves in the future, you know, this year during the holidays, we had that uptick. This gives us a week hopefully, right?
Fingers crossed that we.
Kind of let it die down a bit.
Yep, absolutely.
Do we gain, because we're kicking the fall semester, you know, back, I guess, a week. Do we gain any school days or are we just adjusting?
We just adjust the schedule. We have more days than, we always have more days than are actually required by the calendar. So this is still four over. We go four longer than most of the partner districts as well. So even when we're in school, sometimes they're out of school. So really what aligns more than anything are just the, the major breaks that we keep those together.
So again, this is for exclusively our district only per se?
Yes.
Okay. And going forward, Sean, the, the days that were previously designated for so, snow days will not be included in this because they'll be remote learning days? Is that correct?
We have still kept the days in. So theoretically, we could drop down to a hundred and seventy-six days of student attendance, but we've kept those days in. So most school districts go one seventy-six and add those five on the end and just go longer. We've always built them in to make sure that the end of the, the end of the year is predictable so that we're not extending either into a holiday or further into the summer. So much to the chagrin of most students, we're probably not taking snow days or climate weather days anymore. They've become e-learning days. And so in the past, we could have a scenario where you go one seventy-six. We'll probably always go one eighty, one eighty-one depending upon what's in the calendar.
I will just say, that doesn't mean that anytime it snows, we're going to do an e-learning day. So just, I had to communicate that a little.
No, I think it's okay once and for all now too. And I think in fact that supports promotional health, so.
That also helps me with the hundred eighty-five contract of teacher days.
Can you also address the new course proposal?
Yeah, so that's a second reading. That's been before you before. It's our regular level psychology class and so we're recommending that forward. That will not take effect until the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, so we're well ahead of that.
So just for the coody of the social sign, the new course program proposal, are we going to do, bring anything related to world history section, any chance? Something like this possibly? Yes, no?
We have, we have world history courses, so we have world history and we have world cultures. So there are existing courses that are on the books.
And they do reflect the updated standards stuff. They do reflect those updated standards.
Any other questions or comments? Kilber?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Yusuf A. Brunson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to approval of bids and awarding of contracts. Do I have a motion on nine, eight, Ambassador Apparel? So move to second. Okay, where this was mentioned in the report from the finance, but Mary.
Generally, we do a three-year PE uniform bid, but with supply chains being what it is, they indicated that they couldn't hold prices for three years. So we did a one-year bid, had multiple bidders. Ambassador Apparel, who was our incumbent vendor, was the low bidder. It will allow us to keep what we charge for PE in forms of same.
Just, they are from state of Illinois, our local neighborhood vendor?
They are from the state of Illinois, I believe Palatine. Otherwise, I know that they are from the near north suburbs.
The other four, are they?
Somewhere in state, somewhere out of state. One was from Texas, one was from Iowa and I don't recall where the other two were.
Or is this situation, we are dealing with a local type vendor?
Correct. Yes.
And I like that they were divested. There are incumbent and there's continuity. Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf A. Brunson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on nine, B, maximum holder staffing services? So move to second.
All right. So in your fore pack, you have a memo and the agreement that has been reviewed by our attorneys. We've had an agreement with Maxum since seventeen eighteen and this is really to help cover services when we're not able to staff for them. Mostly health nurses, aides or behavior technicians. And usually these are in rare situations and or very specialized care where we're not able to either find staffing or during COVID, some of our students who may be in and out and not here on a consistent basis due to their, you know, federal medical state, it makes more sense to be able to contract those services than to hire somebody that would be sitting here when the student is not here. And so we're asking you to go ahead and approve for the agreement with Maxum to continue. We made some minor adjustments to the contract, just include COVID and if there were to ever be any remote type learning due to medical issues for a student, to support that and then just the rate adjustments.
So would that be for in-home? You were saying that they were remote?
Only if a student had like medically required to go there, but typically we've been able to provide that otherwise. Right now that is not a situation we're in, but that is something that they could provide.
Do you think we've had them since the seventeen eighteen calendar? At first I thought you meant the year seventeen eighteen, that's a really long time waiting for this to be a seventeen. Well, I figured that out.
Moving on.
Seventeen eighteen.
Any other questions, comments? Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Yusuf A. Brunson?
Aye.
Bessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on nine, C, Southern Bus and Mobility Activity Buses?
Second.
So as discussed earlier this year, we are trying to increase our white activity bus fleet to reduce our reliance on outside transportation. The lead times for white activity buses are very long. This will actually be probably paid for during the next school year, but we bid nine. The low vendor, Central State's bus, actually asked to have their bid withdrawn because two days after they bid, they were subject to a price increase and could not honor their bid price. Southern Bus and Mobility was hit with one price increase. They said that they would honor their bid price, but asked us if we could hurry up and award the bid so that they could get it ordered, which is why this did not go to committee, but is now going to the board for approval. This will increase our fleet by seven because we are trading in two of our two thousand and seven white activity buses that have served us well, but are now beyond our useful life. So we're getting about five thousand dollars for the trade. So we're getting about five thousand dollars for the trade-in.
Do they, are they alternated, or are they, how are they spread out?
So each school will get three new ones. Well, and so each school will have two new ones.
Yes, sorry, I didn't mean to.
And then how many students do they hold?
They hold sixteen, fourteen in the, fourteen in the dryers of fifteen.
There's a lot of times where we share buses too, around between schools.
Yeah.
But this, we.
Yeah, we've been using them, and there's a lot of times where a group will take two. So we'll have two coaches who will grab two of them.
And so then would this also reduce your overheads on the M and M?
Yes. That's our, our goal is to become more self-sustaining in our own transportation.
Right, and so that would also reduce the cost?
Yes.
Paying out, is that, that seems very, very expensive, right, to be using M and M?
Yeah, so we figured that if we use these buses twenty times per year, which we will do way more than that.
Right.
That is a break-even for them being cheaper than external transportation.
And are these driven by coaches, teachers?
Coaches, teachers, yes.
Our people.
Our people, our own staff. And so like, when possible, so if we have a staff member who is not trained, but there's the ability to do this, we are now also offering our supervisory stipends to hire a driver, so that someone will get paid the ninety-dollar supervisory stipend, act as the driver, will allow that team to take the white activity bus.
You're saying that's a fifteen-person maximum capacity, correct? Because as we all know, anybody, coaches or teachers or individuals like you and I, we could drive up to fifteen, fifteen passengers, that's our capacity. Anything more, we need a special.
Are you volunteering, Jen?
Yes.
I'm not a good driver.
Absolutely not.
I try if you want.
I should point out at this point that we are asking you to have the alternate, which is the backup camo. We find those are very helpful to drive.
Okay, let's take a vote, let's take a vote with everyone. Kilber?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Fessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on nine D, decision, add data storage? So move.
Second.
So this is the contract that we had alluded to through the Ed Committee meeting. What this product enables us to do is keep all of our varied data in one particular warehouse. What we have now, if you would imagine, if we have ten different systems, they each have their own space where it lives, and we have to write code to bring all that together, this would house, for example, those ten things in one warehouse, and just make it much more accessible to our teachers on the ground. So this is also going to, we have a vacant position in tech, which we're looking to replace. This will help make that replacement a cheaper replacement option than what we had in the past.
And as someone that is frequently asking a lot of data questions, sometimes on behalf of the board, we badly need this. We have, we just have a lot of moving parts out there that we need to try to sync together. But this is a problem that everybody chases, that in particular, we need to really get at this.
I just want to say again, the presentation, and a lot of us were at it. I mean, I think it was really, really great to hear that, because we always kind of see tech people leaving, and we're not sure, so thank you very much.
Yeah, and rather than Carla sending it, if you could send it to the entire board.
It should be in your.
I don't even think I had it.
I didn't mean to.
Should be in your email. You should have it.
Oh, look at you. Okay, thank you. Yeah, it was very good. Good, great.
Just want to quickly add, I know you guys do a fantastic job regarding this purchasing top technology businesses and so on, and I have been numerously mentioned, I know we do not have a, we don't have to enforce that hiring outside of our state does not have a mandatory, of course, but if when possible, always, if we can find some local business resources as much as we can, support the local businesses, support minority businesses, we'll be grateful, because I think it's important for, we don't want to lose our businesses out of state. Illinois is moving out to different places, having other states, New York, LA, Texas, having, conducting the businesses, and not ours. If you can find possibly, initiatively, if you can find some local vendors, local within the state, that will be, you know, great. Just kind of keep that, I know you guys have that in always in mind, but I think it's very important, supporting our local business community. Thank you.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Fessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on number ten, resolution abating taxes levying for twenty twenty-one?
So move. Second.
As discussed, and the committee reading report, this is the abatement resolution, which will reduce the debt service levy for this year by two million dollars. We discussed this probably starting in December, came up and discussed the resolution in detail. This will simply rebate two million dollars and what we passed in our, in our levy for twenty twenty-one back to the tax payer.
We're sharing this with our communications community.
Yep.
Any questions? We've talked about this at length. In fact, we brought it a month earlier. I think we originally talked about bringing it in March, so thank you for your quick work. Any questions, comments? Coyle?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Fessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on number eleven, IBA agreement?
So move. Second.
So this is similar to other intergovernmental agreements that we've entered into. While the placement decision is the decision of an IEP team, when it is a public day school, we do ask to enter into an intergovernmental agreement. We have not worked with Skokie District sixty-five in the past, and so we have a student that we had placed there, and so we're asking to approve the agreement. For specific terms for each student, they will provide us each time with an Exhibit A, they will outline the terms for that student. So for example, when we just approved and talked about Maxim, so like for one we have right now, they are unable to provide an aid, so that's written into the agreement right now that we're providing that, and then they are not charging us for that piece of it. So each of those pieces will be individual to the student who's going to sign that IEP.
And I'm sorry, you said that we haven't done this before with them?
Correct, not in recent years that I'm aware of. But it was the best placement for the student.
So it's one student that was currently?
Correct, that moved from another placement to this placement. So they were already budgeted.
Any other questions, comments?
This follows the normal format.
And our attorney reviewed it.
We normally have it with two nineteen, right? We have one with two nineteen.
We have ISSO and NTDSO that we've done agreements with, and so this is now another public day school. Yeah, which is a little different than when you go to a private day school, you don't have to do the intergovernmental agreement, but when it's another public school district, you do have to do the intergovernmental agreement.
Oh, okay. Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Fessler?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on twelve A and B, memorandums of understanding to open college?
So move. Second.
So these are standing agreements that are actually already active, but there was a change to the state law for each of them, both the dual credit act and the data sharing between government entities. And so these just reflect those changes. So there are things, like I said, that are standing, so some minor tweaks. One's related to access to special education services, and the other one is more along the lines of encouraging and ensuring students have the opportunity to take dual credit courses.
Those are good changes.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Any questions, comments?[1643.27]